Good afternoon, thank everyone for coming. It is now 5:06 and I will call our regular meeting to order. Trustees Oliver, will you lead us in the place of the flag, please?
Planted allegiance to the flag of the honest faith of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to the liberty of its own.
Mr. Chancellor, has the meeting notice been properly posted?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. At this time, the Board of Trustees, in accordance with Section 55.001 of the Texas Government Code, will move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions of the Act. Section 55.1.071, Section 55.1.072, Section 55.1.074, and Section 55.1.076. We will reconvene our regular meeting no earlier than 6:00 PM. And we will reconvene our regular meeting, and we're deviating a little bit from our standard meeting. At this point in time, we will have our tax rate public hearing. And Ms. Mott, would you make your presentation?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, this is our second tax rate hearing. So the proposed tax rate that this board proposed at the September Board Meeting for fiscal year 2020, this is tax year 2019, is a total of 10.78 cents. This is broken down between maintenance and operations tax rate of eight cents and 2.78 cents for the interest and sinking fund, that's the debt service fund, that's the INS. So that's the proposed tax rate. Just some highlights here about how this process works. We received the certified values from the appraisal districts in late August, and we publish, we published September 4th as required by law, the effective tax rate. And then there's public hearing notices that were published September 17th. And that interest and sinking fund rate is a calculated rate. We have to back into it based on how much we need in order to pay the debt service. So just to give some context on this proposed tax rate, this is the appraised values of our taxing jurisdiction. The bars are the values, and then the line is the actual growth rate. And in the bars, the red portion is Harris County and the blue portion is Montgomery County. So you can see for fiscal year 2020, we are estimating this appraised values to be about 6.6% growth over last year, which is very healthy growth. This shows a comparison of our property tax rates over the past 15 years to the state average. You can see that for the entirety of the 15 years, we have been well below the state average.
While you're there, if you could go back, since we have a state representative here and a former board member, our tax rate is actually less now than it was in 2005. So, and we've lowered the tax rate three times in five years. So, we're very conscientious about our dollars.
So from these taxes, this shows our sources of revenues. The property taxes are our largest revenue source, at about 42% of all of our revenues. Followed behind that is tuition and fees from students, is 27%, and then another 20% coming from the state. So, I mean, but this is just to show that these property taxes are a very important part of our budget. So then this chart shows the actual amount of revenues that come in off of the property taxes, the bars being the dollar amounts. And there, the blue is the maintenance and operations portion that goes into our operating budget, and the red portion is that debt service, that INS portion that goes into the debt service fund. And then the line, you can see that tax rate. So this is where you can see that we did drop the tax rate in 2013, 14, 15, 16, and 17. So for those five sequential years, we dropped it, and we've been holding it flat since then. This chart tries to put us in comparison to all 50 community colleges in the state in terms of our usage of property taxes. Here, 40, you can see where we are, at 42% of our revenues coming from property taxes. That does put us among the, at the 15th highest among the 50 community colleges for how much of our budget is composed of property taxes. You can see the state median is around 28%. And I would say a good portion of this is a function of our healthy tax base. So just to show what, where we're at, and then what happens from here. I mean, this started back on September 5th. The September 5th regular board meeting is when the board proposed the tax rate and set the hearing dates. We had the first hearing on Wednesday, September 25th. Right now is the second public hearing. And then on Monday is when the board will meet again to vote on adopting the tax rate. Thank you.
Board members, any questions or comments? Dr. Head, you got a question or comment? Okay, if not, Helen, do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak about the tax rate? Thank you. I have an announcement, and I think Jennifer just mentioned it. But our next meeting on the proposed tax rate will be Monday, October 7th, at 5:00 PM here in the boardroom. So feel free to attend if it meets with your personal schedules. At this point in time, I will adjourn the tax rate public hearing, and we will reconvene our regular monthly meeting. And I'm going to call on Dr. Head to make introductions of special guests and recognitions.
So we have a, sorry, we have a couple of introductions. Andrew Christman from Community Impact, Andrew, where are you? Yeah, right there, thank you for being here. And Jim Kane, the former superintendent of Klein, ASG, thank you, Jim. So, we have a special, is that everybody, Helen? That's everybody, okay. So we have a couple of special guests tonight. We would like to call to the podium Texas State Representative Dr. Tom Oliverson and former LSC trustee Dave Holsey. If you could head right up there, please. And let me tell you, for the rest of you, we asked them here tonight. So we, we created the Life Path Program, which was students with cognitive learning disabilities. So, you probably don't know the whole story over this, but the idea of this came from, we went, the Board of Trustees went to a meeting about four years ago. And Dave Holsey, trustee Holsey, went to a meeting and came back and said, "I've got a program I'd like for you to take a look at," which was the, what ended up being the Life Path Program. And so, Dr. Leanne Nutt took the lead over this, and we created the program. And we've since expanded it to Montgomery, but we were trying to get approval from the state and the coordinating board over this, because we were offering it as a CE program, and we want to offer it as a, as a program for the college. And Dr. Oliverson, Dr. Nutt met, there's a lot of doctors here, but anyway, the president met with Representative Oliverson, and he took it and ran with it, and it, two things. It wouldn't have happened if Dr. Holsey hadn't brought it to our idea. We're only the second college in the country to do something like this. And then it would not have happened through the coordinating board. Representative Oliverson just wouldn't give up on it. So, I mean, we had, we, he helped rewrite the bill, his staff was terrific. We just wouldn't give up on it. And so, the two people, this is going to be one of the neatest programs we have ever in the history of this college, and I, we have a special recognition tonight. So, we have, I know you want to say something, but we have, when you get through, we have a plaque for both of you. The signatures are authentic, I signed it and Dr. Smith signed it. But I just can't tell you both, thank you so much. We, this would not be happening if you hadn't taken the interest in it and pointed it out. And if you, you just kept on, you wouldn't give it up. And, and Dr. Nutt, I, I mean, she wouldn't give up either, so, and I'll let...
Holy smokes. Dr. Head, I wasn't exactly accurate. I didn't come by and say, "Let's take a look at it." I walked into the chancellor's office and said, "We're going to do this."
They all think you're a nice guy, so I was, yeah.
Yeah, you're a nice guy. And, and I wouldn't allow any hesitation. And sure enough, then Dr. Nutt got in on the deal, and off it went. And I really didn't have anything to do with, after that, other than cheering and, because having been a healthcare provider for first few years, I've treated kids the whole time. And when you meet a family, or mom, really, that has a kid with cognitive learning problems, it's a little, it's a little like they're handcuffed. And I didn't have any answers or point him anywhere, or... And then I saw this program, and I said, "This is it." And as near as I can tell, it's, has been an ongoing outrageous success. I'm so excited. And I keep bothering these people. This row of people here is amazing, outstanding. I mean, each one is singular and special, and I know them very well. And I am so grateful for them. And, thank you, and...
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to work with you on this. And, you know, this was an easy sell for me. Sometimes we try to move legislation where folks are resistant or reluctant. But I remember as I talked with people about this bill, I just said, "Look, this is, what this is, is really about two things. For these families and these individuals who are, as Dr. Holsey said, sort of locked in this cycle, this is hope." And I think even more than hope, for the children, this is freedom. And it's priceless, you know? I mean, those of you that know me or hear me often say that knowledge is power, something I believe in very strongly. And I think that that undergirds our educational mission in, in all of our institutions of higher learning. But to be able to give power, hope, and freedom to a family where there is none. I mean, and I've met with a lot of these families where literally it's the thing that keeps them up at night, every night, is what happens to my child when I die? Are they going to be okay? Are they going to be an institution? Is someone going to take advantage of them? How will they live? And you are able to provide all of that for these folks. So it really is just a key to a whole new world. And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I actually have something for you as well. And that is that we have prepared a House resolution in honor of the Life Path Program. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just to say, at the end here, it says, "Resolved that the House of Representatives of the 86 Texas Legislature hereby honors the students who have completed the Life Path Program at Lone Star College and extend to them our sincere best wishes for the future." This was adopted during the regular session of the House on April 11th.
Thank you.
And I want you to have that.
Thank you.
And I just really appreciate you trusting me with this. I know it was a labor of love for all of us, but it's always hard to hand someone else your child and say, "Please, take care of this and see it through." And I just loved every minute of it, so, appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you.
Great job.
We want to take a picture. How do you, okay. There's one right there, one right here. So how do you want to do this?
They want to spread out, yeah. There you go.
You know, just a couple of words, our, I guess, on behalf of the board and also my personal feelings. The, I've been with Lone Star now, this is my fifth year. And the Lone Star tradition is a tradition that will completely change the Houston area. Because what I see is an institution that is looking for ways to make everybody be what they want to be whenever they want to be. And I hope we continue, you know, to do that. And I guess Holsey is gone, but I admire that guy, you know, for going off and coming back with something that's happening in another part of the country and pushed that idea. And that idea has, has, has grown. And I appreciate too, doctor, your efforts. I was up there when you were going through all that stuff. You almost killed me walking from place to place. But thank you, huh? Well, see, I don't have any shoes like that, I need to get some, thank you, yeah. But, thank you, I now see what you guys do, and you are very, very valuable. And everybody that I saw, they have nothing but good things to say about Lone Star and its missions. So thank you for what you've done, and thanks to Dr. Holsey and everyone else.
So also, I think I pointed this out, but we're expanding the program to Montgomery, so we'll have two colleges, and we'll see how that goes, and then we'll keep doing that. But, just to echo what Dr. Smith said, if, all of our state reps and senators, for the rest of you, they were easy to work with, they were interested, they, we saw that they cared. They have an inordinate amount of work to do up there. And I'll speak for this one, it's nice to talk to somebody with some common sense who knows what's going on in this community and actually cares about it and helped us with this. I mean, we never had any, that, that wasn't the issue, it was getting through some of the bureaucratic stuff that you have to go through to get, get these laws passed. It was a heck of a lot of work, so, thank you. This is, this is really like a life changer for a lot of people, so, and thanks, Leanne and Rebecca for taking the lead in this, so, thank you.
Any other board comment, any other board members have short comments to make?
Yes, yes, short comments.
Well, I don't know what short means, but...
No, kidding. No, I just, I just want to add to that. I, I believe that this, this is, this is what happened here, is not an academic exercise. I know, it's not theoretical, it's actually real, it's happening, right? And that was very, one of the highlights, I think, I've been on this board for five years now, was going to the graduation last year, where we did the, we actually gave the first scholar, diplomas, right, the students. And it's a real meaning, real significance. And, and the best part about it is, is that it's not, it's not, that's not the end of it. You create this energy, this, you know, more, more people are talking about it. You have, of course, the Lex lecture and, and beyond that. And it's awareness, and it's, it's, there's a, I was just talking to Dr. Nutt about how my, my job at Metro, I mean, we, we explore those things a little bit more. I mean, you open up, at least for me, how, what else can we do to make it easier, facilitate for people with cognitive disabilities and, you know, mental disability. So thank you, I just want to thank you. And to my former colleague, where are you, Dr. Holsey? I know, where is he? Oh, man, no, I'll, I'll thank him in person, thank you, bye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else, Dr. Head, on introductions? Helen, do we have anyone wishing to make public comments? Okay, John, come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Dr. John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. Last year was my first experience teaching mathematics in the new co-requisite model. If you don't know what that is, students now entering a community college below college level in reading, writing, or mathematics are now directly put into a college-level course anyway with a developmental support class alongside. At some point, I will share with you what it is really like down in the trenches teaching these courses. I think you'd find it interesting. Tonight, however, I want to share with you how teaching corex got me thinking about student grades and professor effectiveness. The state of Texas defines student success as the percentage of students who pass their classes with grades of C or better. Based on that definition, over a period of years, between 60 and 65% of my college algebra students were successful. However, in fall 2018, teaching in the co-requisite model, that success rate fell to 30%. It fell even farther to 27% in spring 2019. There was a part of me that kept wondering, "Is it me? Have I lost my touch? Is the quality of my teaching in decline?" I do have three nice odd teaching awards hanging on my office wall, for heaven's sakes. Then in summer 2019, I, I taught a class entitled Mathematics for Teachers, a course designed to help prepare students to teach in elementary and middle schools. Knowing that their future careers are directly dependent on mastering the content, students in these courses are often highly motivated and focused. Based on the state's definition of success, 100% of the students in this class were successful. So what does that say about me? Does that mean I went from horrible teacher to phenomenal teacher in the space of a few weeks? Simply put, the lesson is that grade distributions don't tell the story of whether or not a faculty member is an effective teacher. To a layman outside of education, this may not make any sense. If Professor X is not passing a lot of students, then Professor X must not be a good teacher, right? This argument overlooks all the complicated variables that impact the grades students make in a class. My own story illustrates a couple of those. First, there are some specialized courses that target students who are highly motivated and focused on the content of the course. There are others, including many core courses, that students take begrudgingly. Some courses, particularly when taught in a co-requisite model, draw large numbers of students who are not very well-prepared for the class. There are many other variables at play as well. We well know that the issues of poverty that many of our students face place great stressors on their abilities to focus on their classes. First-generation college students lack mentors to help them understand how to do well in college. Both poverty and the special needs of first-generation students disproportionately impact our students of color. Classes at popular times are often populated by self-disciplined students who know they should register early. Classes at less popular times may be populated by students who procrastinated in registering and are likely to procrastinate in their work. Considering these variables, one might argue that, well, although it would be unfair to judge an instructor based on one or two semesters, surely a professor whose grade distributions are consistently below average year after year must definitely be doing something wrong, right? Well, that could be true, but it also could be true that the instructor is simply being scheduled with basically the same courses, with students coming from the same communities over and over. We at Lone Star College are greatly blessed that by and large, our administration has not fallen for the assumption that grade distributions are a good way to measure the effectiveness of faculty. From time to time over the years, some of our colleges have sent reports to faculty showing how their grade distributions compare with other faculty in the same department and across the system. Although this data has not been used to evaluate faculty, it has often been presented with no context and no discussion, leaving faculty to wonder if some hidden message was implied. Should they inflate their grades to make themselves look better? Am I saying that grade distributions can never indicate a problem with instruction? Not at all. Supervisors need to observe all instructors' teaching and look at their tests and assignments to see if any of their practices and behaviors are not what they should be. For instructors who are doing fine, their grades are simply a reflection of all the variables that go into student learning. For those who are not, we need to do exactly what a college is designed to do, provide support, training, resources, and mentoring to help all instructors reach their full potential. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John, for those comments. Okay, Dr. Head, you're back on with any comments or reports that you would like to make? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I need to back up, I need to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Board members, we need to approve the minutes from the meeting of September 5th, our regular meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, that we approve the minutes of September 5th. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we need the second meeting for the public tax hearing on September 25th. And may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
You have a sec, it's been moved and properly second that we adopt the minutes from the September 25th public tax hearing. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. Dr. Head, you're on.
So I have four items I want to talk about very briefly. Number one is, we had the dedication of East Aldine Center on September the 13th. It was attended by 250 people. That's the most people that I'm aware of that we've had at an opening like this. If you were not there, what you didn't see was how important these centers are to our communities. And so, we had Dr. Smith, trustee Maria speaking, US Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia, state Senator Cal Alvarado, state representative Armando Wally, mayor Sylvester Turner. And I think all of our board members that were here... all of our board members that were here were at that opening.
Yeah.
So, and there is a, there's a picture right there of our board of trustees, so, it was, I don't know, it was just inspiring, if you were there, to see what that center had, the impact that it has on that community, so, if...
I do want to, I do want to say thank you to all of you guys. This, this particular center meant a lot to the Aldine community. They were waiting for it to be built for years, I guess, correct? And whoever was there, it was sort of like a little family-type of affair. It was really, really nice. I really want to thank everybody who made this possible, and, you know, thank you so much, yeah.
I echo the same thing, and Gerald, good job coordinating, you know, this with your team, it really made me feel special that particular day. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, I was going to mention, thanks to Dr. Apolos and his staff over there, and Dean, and Louise Lucio, for all the work they did over there, it was, it was very well-run. We had speakers, we had 10 speakers, 12 speakers?
I guess we were going to have 13.
Anyway, it went very smoothly. They were all politicians too, most of them. We had, so, we have another important one, we have a groundbreaking for LSC Houston North, Fallbrook Center on Friday, November the 1st, at 11:00 a.m., so we'll send a message or note out to everybody, but, that's at Fallbrook, November 1st, and, yeah, okay. Am I turning this, or are you turning it? Are you turning it? Okay, thank you. I have the thing in my hand, but I'd like, okay. So, and, Dr. Wright is overseeing that project. The next one is, we had a retreat for the foundation on this past Friday, where we talked about the, the long-term issues with the, or the successes of the foundation, but really some long-term efforts, and Nicole Robinson is here, God, he is right there, Nicole. I'm very proud of our foundation, I am very proud, we have, we have come a long way, I was here when it was first created, when I think we subsidized the thing for $10,000 or so, and now we have almost 27 million in the foundation, something like that. But, this came out this past week, so, we are ranked in the top 25 charities in the Houston, last year, for total income, that's the way I'm reading this, right? We're number 25, and the total assets, we're ranked number 18, so, I know a number of the board members have contributed that, and people out in the, in the audience, but, and if you've not seen our board, if you contribute to the foundation, depending on what you do, we have a big board over in the next room over there, in the next building over there, so that you can see it. We have, we have big plans for the foundation coming up for the following year. We've got a lot of really good community support, so I, there's a lot of good things coming out of the foundation, and, I don't know whether Helen told you, but I, either in November or December, you're going to give a report, right? Were you aware of that? You are, okay, you are now, okay, so. And, for the third year in a row, we were recognized as one of the great colleges to work for. These are the categories, we don't choose them, they do, somebody else chooses us, so, so on any given day, you can probably argue about what collaborative governance means, but I really, the things that are interesting to me, that I'm the most proud of, are the teaching environment, and the job satisfaction, the work-life balance, you know, I, I think respect and appreciation of the things that employees, that, to me, that's what they value, that's what's important to me personally, so, I'm, I'm very honored about the, with this, I'm honored to receive this award for the college, because it's just, we work hard to have one of the best colleges in the country, so, we have programs like Life Path, by the way, that's, that's what leads to these kind of awards, so, and that is my...
Okay.
I think that's the only thing, yeah, that's all I have.
Dr. Harrison?
Good evening, Chancellor and trustee members. Tonight, it's my great pleasure, behalf of all the presidents, to give you just a snapshot of the impact of dual credit in early college high school on Lone Star College and the greater So right off the bat, you can see the five-year trend in how dual credit programs or offerings have grown significantly. Actually, in headcount, our dual credit students now make up 22% of all of our students, and 18% of our enrollment, that's significant.
Yeah.
We know that our dual credit students do very well, not only when they transfer here, after having taken dual credit classes in their high school, but also when they go on and transfer to some of our major universities. So you can see the difference in their grade point average compared to first-time-in-college students who come directly there without any dual credit experience.
Just so we're clear about this, I testified on this before the legislature in the last session, we, Lone Star ranks number one in student success in the GPAs, graduation rates, any way you want to take a look at it, for community colleges, that's for all of the major universities, so, if you take dual credit here, you're going to be successful at another college.
These are not inflated courses, their students are well-prepared in the college curriculum, and we work very closely with our ISD partners on this, on this effort.
You know, one, you may not have the data, when you, on the first slide that you had, you mentioned the, you know, the number, what the headcounts are, and what the credit counts are. I wonder if there's any data based up on demographics, on whether each demographics is represented in the same proportion in dual credit as they are in, in the student population?
Before you answer that, we have every piece of data that you could possibly imagine, I'm looking at our data person over there, yes, we have, whatever it is you want, we have it.
Oh, okay, I'm not surprised, that'd be pretty interesting to see, just, just to see. I've, I've always thought that the lower-income people probably didn't participate in dual credit at the same rate as others, and, but I don't have any factual data that says that one way or the other.
Tonight is a snapshot in seven minutes of the presentation, so, we're going to do a follow-up, I think, with some of this other information that you would like.
Point well taken.
But you'll certainly... So, again, just student testimonials on dual credit and how it has helped them. These are Cyfair students, and I won't read these to you. We actually charge dual credit students, if you're taking a three semester credit hour course, only $73, because we waive tuition, we're, they're charged some of the registration fees, so, it really is a bargain. Our biggest competition, our advanced placement, it's not other dual credit programs. So there's a real advantage for the high school student that's prepared and tested into dual credit to take dual credit with us. Other testimonials, from the busy student to the 16-year-old, that because of taking an enormous course load with dual credit, will graduate with both her high school and associate of arts degree. And the North Harris students. It's interesting, because faculty do not know who a dual credit student is, they don't mark them as such on their class roll, so, yes, they are treated, they are college students, they're treated like any other college student. And we do have dual credit offerings in quite a few of our workforce programs, so the second testimonial from North Harris is from a welding dual credit student. Early college high schools are often described as dual credit on steroids, so, dual credit, you can see the difference between the two, and this, this is just some of the differences. Generally, dual credit is offered to anyone that tests into that course, ready to take it, usually the 11th and 12th grade. Early college high schools, there's, often they use the Lotto system in eighth grade to select usually no more than 120 students coming into the ninth grade, that start as a cohort model, whereas other dual credit, general dual credit is not, but as a cohort, those students are in early college high school from ninth grade until they graduate. The ultimate goal is to prepare them, at least to take, to get core complete, but ultimately to complete an associate degree. And I'll show you some stats on that in a few minutes. So in the early college high school, we have many more wraparound services that the high schools also offer in conjunction with the college. Other testimonials from University Park students. When an early college high school student actually completes a degree with us, the opportunities for scholarships to go on to complete a baccalaureate just kind of falls in line. So here's the history of early college high schools at Lone Star, so we now have 13. The newest one is at Houston North, LSC Houston North. So our trailblazer was North Harris's Victory Early College High School. Another testimonial from the early college high school at Victory Center. Early college high schools were originally started with a lot of private money from the state, and the target audience are the students that are disadvantaged, that most likely would never be able to go to college. So, at least 50% of all of our early college high school students are at one, are placed into one of the categories for at-risk. So this shows the impact collectively of those 13 programs. Since they've started, 1,531 high school students have completed an associate degree with Lone Star College, either before or when they get their high school diploma.
Wow.
That's significant.
Yes.
And at least 50% are students of at-risk, that normally would not have had the advantage to go to college. The, the fee or the cost for early college high school is not borne by the student or their family. It is a true partnership between the ISD and the college. Tom Ball students, expressing appreciation. An LSC Kingwood students, one is a new graduate who's now at Texas State, has a bright future, and another one is with Umble ISD Quest Early College High School. I think the early college high school programs are, had the most significant impact of any program I've seen or worked with in my 35-plus years in education. Any questions for the rest of us, other than we know you might want to follow up on dual credit with other stats?
I'm just curious.
So for the board, we're, Dr. Blantzen is taking the lead in some discussions we're having, we're going to be offering dual credit online across the state, just so you'll know, we've been asked by some charter school. They want some consistency, they know about us, we already work with them at two of our colleges, and so, we will, they don't want to go to negotiate with 10 other or 15 other community colleges, they want one, so that'll be us, and, I think some of you know, I know dual credit works for a fact, because three of my four kids went to dual credit, and two went off and graduated at University of Texas, and the other one went to Miami, University of Miami, so, I know it works. It saves parents a lot of money also, a lot of money, so.
I have a question, and, and I know that one of the issues with the first-generation college students is, is that they didn't take, they didn't take the rigor, rigorous courses in high school sometimes, and they moved on, and, but then, you know, there was an article I was reading about how a good, a number of university schools actually don't offer the courses you may need, like you want to go into engineering, they don't have a calculus, and they don't have a, you know, physics, and, and, you know, and I can tell from experience, people, my friends, or other people I know, they just didn't take those courses because they didn't have them. So, I, I guess this, in this, in this sense, that's what it addresses, right? I mean, you could take some of these courses at the college level?
Yes, you can take 60 hours at the college level in an early college high school, and dual credit, you can do that also, but you can do that without being in an early college high school program, and we've had a few students do that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
I will tell you that we have the data on, we have dual credit broken down by ethnicity and gender, we know what the GPA differences are, so, across our, across our system, and we'll get back with you over some of the other information that we got before, that I have in a report, we'll share that with you, so.
Ready? All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jan O Houston, I'm the Faculty Senate President at Montgomery. In the late fall of 1975, my mom and dad told both my brother and me that we were getting two new siblings, and as was often the case, hedging my bets seemed a good idea. So on my way to my friend's house to play, this fourth grader sent up a flare prayer that went something like, "Hey, God, if you have any interest in this outcome, I would like one of each, a brother and a sister." In the spring of 1976, April, my brother and sister arrived, our family had many blessings to celebrate. That same year, my grandpa had a birthday in October. As is often the case around an individual's birthday, grandpa had to get his driver's license renewed, but back in those days, renewal meant from scratch. Grandpa, though, it was the written, the vision, and the driving, the whole shebang, and grandpa aced the written version, but was prevented from moving on to the driving exam. He didn't pass the vision portion. About a week after his 69th birthday, and his failure at the DMV, he brought a bag of Milky Way fun-sized candy bars into the house, made his way to the back bedroom to look in on the twins, patted my other brother and me on the head as we watched the Super Friends on TV, and then stepped out the door to his small camper trailer, taking both the longest and shortest walk of his life. This tiny card, something that almost every one of us in this room has in our purses or wallet, became the trigger, truly the trigger, that prompted my grandpa, my favorite person in the whole world, to end his time on this earth. Almost 43 years hasn't diminished the significance of our time together tonight, and ironically, the power of perception is real. You see, perception is a funny thing, isn't it? How many of you see a vase? Or do you see two faces? Do you see a man looking at you frontal, or do you see his profile? And in Bev Doolittle's artwork here, two Indian horses, do you see the two Indians? Is this cat going up the stairs or down? Well, perception, perception isn't the only power that I want to extol tonight. In reality, Lone Star has considerable power to effect positive change in the lives of our students, and here, I mentioned the Star Gala and the Chancellor's Breakfast. But I ask you, what is it that truly intrigues us and draws us to our students at these important events? It is not necessarily their cognitive abilities, you know, the abilities that allow them to earn an A or some other grade on an algebra exam, or to compose a brilliant rhetorical argument. No, we are compelled by their accounts of bravely conquering seemingly insurmountable obstacles of extreme poverty, deaths of family members, unexpected pregnancies... of extreme poverty, deaths of family members, unexpected pregnancies, sudden illnesses, and more. On our website, we identify with their narratives containing heart-piercing narratives, such as fighting for an education. My father and my grandmother both passed away, and after missing nearly six weeks of school, I survived Lone Star with a GPA of 3.0. I fail more than I succeed. And my life has a fantastic habit of interfering with my education, but I'm trying. This is truly part of the beauty of Lone Star. We have committed ourselves to meeting the needs of our students. But it's crucial to provide context to the word "needs." And for that, we turn to Abraham Maslow. As most of us in this room know, Maslow was an American psychologist who published a theory on human motivation, where he described a pyramid of human needs. The idea was that the types of needs on the higher levels of the pyramid are rather impossible to meet if the needs on the lower levels remain unmet. In other words, the most basic needs must be met prior to higher needs. My instruction in the classroom falls somewhere around the fourth level, somewhere around that green area. You know, at Lone Star, we get this. And just one example is all the work that we're doing as extensions of our work with Pathways, for example. And these are larger aspects of student success. At Lone Star, we really do care. You know, we're an educational institution, and quite frankly, it is not our responsibility to make sure our students can pay their electricity bills, obtain reliable health care. I mean, it's their kids. Have groceries for the week. Get a job. Do we need to really make sure that they aren't living in their cars? Maybe they need to get along better with their family. No. We get Maslow. In fact, it's obvious that we are ardent followers of his general theory. In fact, we spare almost no expense to ensure that our students and even employees have access to technology. And we instituted a CARE, Community Access to Resources for Everyone Task Force. We even gather administrator, staff, advisors, and students into a group to form an academic advising task force, wisely including the stakeholders involved. So, how do we know where our students are positioned on the hierarchy? Well, we ask them. And that's exactly what ABC Marion Chaney did. She wrote a letter to students who had dropped out and had come back to Lone Star. Her letter was simple, yet superb. She introduced herself as a previous community college student, and she also said that she had to pause her education due to finances. But even when she came back, it was still a struggle. She said to the students, that's my story. I'd like to hear yours. She asked them questions like, why did you stop coming? What factors influenced you to return? And what can we do to help you achieve your goals? Well, 112 students responded, and this report confirmed, confirmed what we already know. Even our students report that it's the non-cognitive factors that are the greatest blockades to our students' success. Of course, lack of finances inhibit their abilities to achieve their goals, yet an equally considerable number report that life in the form of physical, emotional, and substance abuse, family deaths, and divorce have had a way of interrupting their educations. Others mention either explicitly or implicitly mental health issues such as depression. Here's what they don't mention, that they are actively, that they actively sought out help at Lone Star or anywhere else. Why is that? Since Lone Star does have the power to affect positive change, and we obviously ascribed to Maslow, is it possible that even though we live according to him, maybe we're not quite fully emphasizing the needs above food, clothing, and shelter? Needs like friendship, intimacy, a sense of belonging and personal security, and health. Yes, even mental health. Of all the letters that I read, only two of them mentioned the word counseling. And of those, one of those instances was career counseling. Look, I get it. I personally understand the stigma and the lack of understanding that surrounds mental health. That's why the statistics show that 67% of those struggling with mental health issues go untreated. And even though, that's the case, but even though up to 90% of those with bipolar, or 80% of those with major depression could be successfully treated. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, 1 in 6 people have a diagnosable mental condition. That means of the 66 people in this room, 11 of us are struggling, probably in silence. For our students, the lack of their ability to seek help or know where to go is catastrophic. At a minimum, this warrants thoughtful and multifaceted consideration. Maslow also says, "To a man who only has a hammer, everything he encounters begins to look like a nail." If we look at each student as a mental health case or a referral number, we will use the same tool for every single incident. The issues that plague our students cannot simply be attributed to test anxiety or stress. What about those students who don't know what LSC offers, or who wouldn't score high on a test that measured help-seeking behavior? Well, what about an assessment tool like Smarter Measure? This semester, a team at Montgomery, led by Dr. Michael Chavez, Dr. Terry Peterman, Dr. David Pyle, and Mr. Matthew Sanford began to use this diagnostic device to help identify learners who might be at risk of dropping out. Now remember our previous conversation about cognitive versus non-cognitive factors? Smarter Measures assesses levels of non-cognitive indicators of student success. This team moved the assessment to our very first week of our EDUC courses, so that we can get in there and intervene early. Both the students and administrators receive detailed reports, and they look like this. The structure of the assessment is seen here in 11 subgroups. Now, it's interesting because this is the information that remains with Dr. Pyle, for instance. And I just want to point out the slide on the right. This is an honor section, and they have completed the non-cognitive assessment. Wouldn't you assume that those of us who have very high cognitive abilities would also be equipped non-cognitively, but look at their individual attributes like time management, procrastination, persistence, a locus of control? On the left, look at the low. Look at those two red places. That's where we can start to target and look for intervening ways for our students. Tonight, oh, I'm sorry. What I would like to say here is that when you look at these individual attributes, it cannot be understated that the data is powerful. And if you take time management and locus of control, which is, does life happen to me, or when life does happen to me, am I resilient? If you score low in both of those measures, you have only an 8% probability of persisting. That means 92 students out of 100 will not persist, will not complete, will not succeed unless we intervene. Tonight, my ask is that we take mental illness seriously, and that we do so intentionally, and that we not cavalierly approach all students with a mental health issue as nails. And we do that, just as we did for our Academic Advising Task Force that was focused on student success. We bring all our counselors together. Yes, our community and schools, our CIS counselors, and our LSC counselors together, so that the true professionals, the content experts, are designing meaningful, intentional, and functional strategies to help our students with the non-cognitives, the needs that they require to be addressed before they even enter my classroom. Mr. Castillo is a brilliant lawyer and a skilled litigator, and yet he tells the Faculty Senate Presidents consistently in our meetings with him that he would never tell an English professor how to do her job. I'm a science professor, and I would never tell a history professor how to do his job. We allow stakeholders to define the parameters of their disciplines here at Lone Star, just as we did in the Academic Advising Task Force. So why would we not encourage and embolden the counselors in like endeavors? How many of us have their educations, their certifications, their licensures, their experience? Now, you would think that a family who had experienced divorce, abandonment, poverty, and suicide would have the playbook memorized, but on September 21st, 1984, on the day of my senior portraits, that day of snapshots remains frozen in time. My dad stood in the very driveway where my grandpa walked. Perception is a funny thing, is it not? To stand in the driveway and to stand on the precipice of a tragedy, feeling utterly helpless with no power to present it. My dad's path is different from his father's, but the outcome is exactly the same. We can make and be the difference. Thank you, Chancellor Head, Chairman Smith, Board, and distinguished guests.
That was a great job. Okay, board members, it is now your opportunity to talk about activities and things that you've done over the last month.
So I'm a... Well, I got to visit the Non-Destructive Testing Lab at Aldine at the opening of the, of the center there. And that was really cool. That lab had some neat things in it. If you get a chance and you're at all interested in that kind of thing, you really ought to go there. They really know what they're doing. And I like, I think I'm going to go spend some time there.
Hey, great. Anyone else? I do, a couple of things I wanted to mention. A week or so ago, I was invited to an activity, and they were honoring hometown heroes, I mean Woodlands hometown heroes. There were six or seven heroes that were honored that night, and a couple of heroes were honored or mentioned at least from previous years. Two of those heroes are here with us tonight. The most recent hometown hero is our chancellor. A previous hometown hero was trustee vote. And again, we heard a lot of good comments about the great things that Lone Star is doing, and how valuable Lone Star is, you know, to the entire community. So congratulations to both of our hometown heroes. Continue to do what you do. We are proud of you, and we hope to have you around a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. If not, at this point in time, we need to consider the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda tonight, we have 10 items. Are there any items that you would like to have pulled and considered separately? If not, may I have a motion to adopt consent items 1 through 10? And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we accept items 1 through 10. All of those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, thank you. Ms. Mott, you're back again on finances.
Thank you. Yes, this is our financial report, and included in your board packet is the detailed financials, and the presentation is the summary. This is the last monthly financials for fiscal year 2019. I know currently we are in fiscal year 20, but since we present the financials in arrears, right, this is for month ending August 31st, 2019. So here, this shows you that for 2019, we had 368 million of actual revenues collected. This was 96 and 1/2% of what we had budgeted. And throughout the year, we had discussed in our forecast where we were expecting to fall short. And there's more details on that in a later slide. This is the expenditures. Our actual expenditures was 341 million, or 93% of what was budgeted. And you can see this is a relatively low amount compared to prior year expenditures as a percentage of our budget. Our ending cash reserve balance, so the final fiscal year 2019, ending cash reserve balance was 66.5 million, which is 18.1%. This is an increase from our forecast throughout, throughout most of the year. We had been forecasting, well, at least towards the second half of the year, forecasting 16, ending at 16%, and we ended at 18.1. We had budgeted to end at 17%. So I'm happy to say that we exceeded both of those. So now that beginning, or that ending cash reserve balance turns into the beginning cash reserve balance for fiscal year 20. So fiscal year 20, right, has its new budget that the board adopted in August. So that same 66.5 million, now when you take it as a percentage of the new current year's budget, is 17.5%. So that's what we are starting the year at. The budget that this board adopted in August, budgeted for us to end this year at 16%. So the 17% at least gives us, you know, some cushion throughout the year for anything unexpected, to hopefully still be able to meet the 16% target that was budgeted for.
So, we're in great shape, put it that, that way. So we're, our target is to move on up to 20%. And that's based on Standard &amp; Poor's and JP Morgan recommendation. So we're really, I think we're in great shape financially, so. We make the adjustments. We didn't hit our enrollment numbers this time, but we make the adjustments now. We've already made those adjustments. So we just lower our expenses when we don't hit our income projections, so.
Yeah, and that's where, we want to reach 20%. 16% is our minimum. So being able to start the year at 17 and 1/2%. I hope we can keep most of that and end the year at 17 and 1/2%, but if not, that at least gives us room to make sure we are remaining above the 16.
How mu, how much are we scheduled to incur an additional, additional costs in the, in the coming five years due to our, our growth and the, the growth of our system?
Well, we, our budget grows, I mean, we, it grows by the revenues. So it depends on the enrollment growth, right? Last year, we ended up negative growth, so we didn't have growth. In the next five years, I think we've been estimating maybe 2 or 3% growth. But so, as we've worked through the five-year plan and showed with the board, there it's, we see what revenues are available, and we budget towards what's available.
So we have those projections that I can send to you on the five-year, but that's based on a couple of scenarios that we developed that we've been talking about. As, for example, before we did it, we were estimating 3% growth for the next couple of years. We will go back and take a look at that because our enrollments are not at 3% right now. It depends on what happens with the economy. And we were, we've had, you know, the other factors in there, like what we thought the state would do. We've been very conservative on assessed value. So we can send that to you and show you what, where we think today will be, but we've been very conservative on that. I mean, by design, we've been conservative on it, so.
One of the things I see that I would like to talk about and, and discuss... One of the things I see that I would like to talk about and discuss is the use of bond funds for items that are not as long-term as the debt we take on.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I agree. We can do that. It's something we've talked about before. It's like, exactly how do we want to use those bonds and the proper use of those bonds? So, okay, we'll get a list for you then.
Yeah, we used to get lists that kind of showed the pay-down of our earlier debt and how that reduces our debt obligation. The next bond issue, the next time we go to the voters for authorization to meet our growth projections.
I'm with you.
We're not really increasing our debt, but replacing it.
Okay, I'm with you. Okay, we'll get that.
Yeah, and I can get a report that shows the average life of our debt as compared to the useful life of the assets that it purchased.
Yeah.
I think that'd be good to look at.
So for fiscal year 2019, I'm showing here that our unaudited actual revenues was 13.1 million below budget. Throughout the year, we had been forecasting about 9.5. So this did come in slightly higher than what we had been forecasting predominantly. This was in that area of taxes, which, as I had talked throughout the year, was an area that we were struggling to estimate last year. And we've built a whole new model to use this year and hope to see it work better than last year. For expenditures, our unaudited actual expenditures were 24.9 million below budget. We had been forecasting 5.3 million. I recognize that that's a huge difference there. But here, I want to note that we are only going to forecast explicit decisions to not spend budget. So when enrollment growth came in less than budgeted, we made a conscious decision to do expenditure cuts. Those were included in the forecast. But we are not going to forecast just simply unspent budgets because everyone has that spending authority right up until August 31st. And that is the, that's what accounts for this large difference between what we were forecasting and actual expenditures being almost 25 million below budget. So that's our financials. Now going into a Harvey update. Here, we have 48.8 million in expenditures, up from 46. 44 million of this is at Kingwood. And an update of what we've received from FEMA. This past month, we got another 55,000, which is not that much. But remember, previous to that, we had received 9.5 million. So we have received 10.3 million total from FEMA. And in your, no, this chart just shows expenditures. But in your board packet on the Harvey report includes revenues. So you can now see on this report total revenues in the Hurricane Harvey Fund of 33.6 million. So this is 10.3 million that we've received from FEMA, about another 11 million from insurance proceeds, and the 13.1 million from the state. So clearly not there yet. Clearly something I'm going to keep reporting on. But I do feel like out of 48.8 million in expenditures, we have received revenues towards this of 33.6 million. And then this just, this shows the update on kind of what our progress is through FEMA. And here, and so the last thing I might just mention is a quick note about Imelda. We did have, especially compared to Harvey, relatively minor damage. But there was still some damage, some roof leaks at Kingwood and North Harris. So we had remediation. So there was minor roof leaks really throughout the system. But the ones where we had to call in remediation services for water damage was at North Harris and Kingwood. And so there, we did have to authorize emergency remediation services. So next month, we will be bringing a board agenda item to ratify those services. We're still trying to get a final estimate on those costs. I think right now at Kingwood, it was looking like about 50,000 on the remediation costs. So it might be another 50 or so. Again, I'm just estimating. We do not have final numbers yet at North Harris. So we're probably looking at 100 to low 100,000 range in the remediation costs just from, just some water damage from Imelda. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, great job to you and your staff, as usual.
So David, if I could add one thing, just to follow up on what you said. We're also looking at room utilization studies. And we were going to have a discussion. I don't see a bond on the horizon. We've got so much room to grow. And we still have 90 in Phase 2, 90 million, and then another 185. So we still have 275 million on the current bond. So we have a ways to go before, and we've got considerable capacity now. You know, when you think about capacity, you think about, well, people at the college. But we're doing, online is expanding, dual credit's expanding. We still don't do as much in the afternoon and as at night as we could. We don't do the weekends like we could. I mean, we've got a lot of capacity to grow. So I understand what you're saying about the bond expenditures. But as we just take a look at the big picture, we, Lincoln and I just met this week about room utilization and kind of where we are with it. And Jennifer was in that meeting. So we are taking a look at everything, but that's way off on the horizon for us.
Thank you. There's no building ground other than what's in the book.
There's a construction report in your board packet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any future agenda items? If not, I have one. And I'll just read the notes that Helen gave us. Lone Star College of Montgomery's venue for commencement is only available on Thursday, May 7, 2020, I mean, which is the same day as the regular board meeting. We would like to discuss changing the Thursday, May 7, 2020, regular board meeting to Wednesday, May 6, 2020. So we'll consider that at the next meeting. If there are no other agenda items for next meeting, I apologize for going 10 minutes longer than Saldivar went to last meeting. But I did my best. Thank you and have a good night.